We're going to open the meeting, Town of Hatfield. Meeting notice for the Planning Board, January 4th, 2015, 7:30 Memorial Town Hall. My name's Paul Dostal. I'm the acting chairman. We have Mr. Labby, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Sassy, and Wilma Davis is the recording secretary. I'd like to take up the first minute or so to remember another member of the Planning Board that passed away, Mr. Pat Malloy. He was a longtime member of the Planning Board. He passed away at 94 years old. And I'd just like to take a moment of silence in remembrance of Mr. Pat Malloy for his contributions to the Town of Hatfield and to the Town Planning Board. Okay. First order of business is Mr. William Mazick, 69, Old Stage Road. How are you tonight?
I'd like to let Chris cut in front of me. He gave me $10 and he's got a promise at home. And he said he's only five minutes. So I'll let Chris cut in front of me so he can get out of here.
All right.
Hi, Chris DiQuanto, 67 here for those very simple...
Come on up and show us what's going on, please.
...going at home and because of some minor changes in development. Here we are, right over here. Scott Harlow.
Does he have more than one?
Yeah, sure. I got five of them. Because of some minor changes right here to the garage, Scott Harlow gave an adjustment of property, so we're moving the property line in 20 feet from our lot to his existing lot next door.
Okay.
There's no setback issues or anything like that. It's just a matter of because this garage is built right on the line. This garage is built right on the property line. He gave an adjustment of 20 feet to meet the requiring setbacks for the lot next door.
So the lot is going from here to here?
To here, that's correct.
Coming out of this one?
That's right.
And so that's why this is now a revised...
That's right.
Revised Lot 4?
Oh, okay.
Yep. Randy Isner drew that up. Came out and surveyed it.
So is there an existing, just for the rec... Is there an existing structure here? This 67 is there?
Yeah, we're going to see you in probably this week.
And then the garage was built too close?
The garage was built, yeah. Well, yeah. When he built it, it was built right on the line. It was kind of like a little bit of an oversight and only wanted to extend out. That's exactly what it was. So what they did is they came out and they surveyed the setback requirements for the lot. Basically, that's what they did. There's no implications on the lot next door for him or anything else.
Is there a house on Lot 4 yet?
No.
Okay.
Nope. Here, nope, 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 nope. There's only one down at the end. So that's vacant, that's vacant, that's vacant.
So is that far enough?
This is the one you're going to build on?
No, I already built right here.
Oh, you're already here?
Yes. We're finished by tomorrow. We're going to finish up.
Okay.
So how many feet now is that? I'm just looking at the... No, it's light industrial. What the setbacks are supposed to be?
I think it's 20 on an outbuilding. I was told by, I think, Kyle Scott.
That's what, rural residential, right?
Yep. This is, we're going 22, I think.
Well, it doesn't say.
I think he looked it up for me. I think he said it was 20.
It says rural residential. Minimum rear yard. That's what? That would be a side yard, right?
Um, what's happening?
Yep.
This?
Yep, would be a side yard.
Where the garage is, I guess.
Yeah, it's a side yard.
Yeah, it's the front, yep. That's correct.
I guess that's 15 feet, right?
Yeah, I think it's 15, but I'm not certain. I haven't got it. Yeah, it is 15. It's 15. It's 15 and he gave you another 5.
He gave 22.
Okay, okay. One's 20, one's 22.
Yeah, that's right. Well, it's kind of...
As long as he...
The gold name was bad.
As long as he gave you off the 15, it's fine.
Right. So it's a simple, very simple, simple little thing, yes.
Any discussion? I'd make a motion to approve this property line adjustment.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you want copies of all these?
We need decided, right? Do we need...
I should take a look at them.
I have this right here, is what I think.
Subdivision through, that required.
Is this the paper that you need?
Mm-hmm. I need two of them, actually. Do you have a second?
Oh, I do have it on the...
That's all I'll make the call.
Do you give you a check, woman?
Yes, we need a check. Yep, this is an A and R.
You need a $50 check?
No, he didn't tell me that.
No one told you?
No, I'll get it dropped off tomorrow.
That'll be fine and you can pick up the additional plans then tomorrow.
Oh, I need more plans?
You come to see me.
Do I need more plans?
How many did you bring?
Uh, I think five. Is there...
It really should have eight.
Oh, you need eight?
You don't need to...
Uh, but is... We could probably live... We have to distribute at least four.
Here's one, here's a Mylar.
And that would leave one for you. The Planning Board likes to have an additional one, but...
He's got eight copies in a Mylar. He's got enough.
Okay, we're all good.
Yeah, can I have one copy in there?
I'll give you whatever is left over.
Yeah. I'll drop that off tomorrow. One more $50, Town of Hatfield, and that'll be that.
Come to the secretary's office.
Got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wilma, can I have that? No, no, there you have it. Rubber band, I'm sorry.
He gets the Mylar, right? He records the Mylar.
Yeah, but we got to sign that, right?
Yeah.
We'll sign it after. Okay, Mr. Mazick.
Okay. That's a format that I hope to be following or following. Been here several times. Last time, I said you couldn't do anything unless I had a formal plan done. I finally got a formal plan done on what I want to do for the subdivision. Under the town bylaws, open space. And been done by Harold Eaton and stuff, so he's licensed with the state. Hopefully, that'll satisfy you. Under the guidelines for subdivision, calls for a minimum of 80-foot frontage with a 52-foot square foot area, 1.25 acres, but maximum of 15 lots doable. Myself, I was looking for eight lots, but they would be smaller lots. The engineer and I sat down, agreed on five lots. The smallest lot being 4.9 acres and the largest lot being 11.49 acres. Total land to be divided was 38.73 acres. And if we take off for easement for the right-of-way and the five building lots that would be created, we've got 32 acres left. Now, in the open space, they want 40% to be set aside. And with the five lot, less than five lots and the roadway, there's 32 acres, which is two and a half times what is required. Now, the only requirement that I really couldn't meet under the subdivision requirements was Section 5, dead-end streets and a cul-de-sac. And I'd like to point out that the Planning Board, by its own bylaws, has the right to grant a petition and to waive the cul-de-sac or waive any of the requirements that the Board wishes to waive. Now, my... One of my complaints is that the city fails to follow its own guidelines when it comes to the standards for roads and roadways. And Old Stage Road is a perfect example. A few hundred feet past my house, it narrows down towards about 12, 15 feet wide, which is not even the minimum requirement. And a half a mile up the road where it dead-ends, there's no cul-de-sac. And I don't think that the way I have there requires a cul-de-sac. And the reason being is that I think everybody may remember last year that it was...
Was it only one of these?
I got more at home. I didn't know you required so many until I got here. Last year, there was a fire on the other side of the mountain, which you probably all remember, in Northampton, up on Mountain Street. They had five different fire departments there, 75 firefighters, and the house was a total loss, mainly due to lack of water. And anyways, someone from the fire department... Last year, we took some time off in October, and when we come back, we found out that the fire department was up on our property. And I had a piece of land in the back, which I have sold off, but there's a pond on it. And the fire department, nearest fire hydrant is on Lencie Road at the corner of Old Stage Road, which is over a half mile from my house. And it's over a mile from the houses at the end of Old Stage Road. So someone in the fire department had enough brains to decide maybe they're better find a water source closer to the upper end of Old Stage Road. And there's a pond out there that was created years ago by Lenny Helms. And they got together, they went up there with their equipment. I talked to one of the firemen that was there for the drill, asked them what problems, if any, they ran into. They had no problems getting the fire equipment up the road or down the road. Trucks were able to turn around. They were able to lay out all their hoses. The only problem that they ran into was their equipment wasn't working properly or having a problem with their pumps. So in the past, when I came here, that was a big deal, is that we need a cul-de-sac for fire equipment. It's quite obvious that the fire equipment can get up there with no problem and they can get out of there with no problem. And so I would be asking that you grant the subdivision and waiver a cul-de-sac at the end of the road. I came here ready to battle. And my intentions were, if I need to go to court, we go to court. Well, last... Over the last week, I've done a lot of research and a lot of thinking. And to me, it's not worth the battle, to fight over this. And I kept all this land under Chapters 59, paying top dollar for taxes. And I never filed for any Chapter 61, which would give me a tax rate. And right now, I estimate I'm paying about $2,400 a year more in taxes on this land. That ain't count my house, that's just the property. Because we do over-evaluation the property. And doing research, I can put under 4th Street, 61B, I can reduce that by 75% and I can get my tax rate down to $600, which is doable. But I'm still answerable to the city and to the assessor's office. The assessor makes up their own rules, their own regulations, and they charge what they want. A piece of land, which I just recently purchased from the town for $1,920, the assessor's office saw a fit to appraise it at $32,000, $500 an acre. It's landlocked land. The only way to get at it is over my property.
Can we... Can we take... Can we pause here for a second? I mean, you're already getting into arguing why we might or may or may not approve this. So let's... So you are proposing an open space development? Are you proposing something here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was told that I wanted a building lot and I was told that I could not ask for a building lot. I had come up with a proposal, how the land would eventually be subdivided.
So where is the... Where is actual... So an open space development has... I mean, you outline what, you know, what would be included in the lots, how much land would be set aside. Where is this... Where is the open space land going to be set aside? Where is it?
Well, there's... You ended up with five lots. Right, yeah. You're coming off the road, you have one, two, three, four, five lots. Each lot would need, under the plan, an acre and a quarter for a building lot. So for each lot that was divided out, you'd need an acre and a quarter. All the rest of the land could be put into open space.
Well, that would be the... That would be what you would want to do in an open space development. I mean, if you read here, which you may very well be able to meet these requirements, but a minimum of 40% of the total development parcel must be permanently protected as common open space.
Right.
At least 70% of that common open space shall be retained in contiguous areas, which could be all of this back here. But it's common open space, not necessarily subdivided off into the individual parcels. And then that land is owned by either a nonprofit or a conservation organization or an individual with an easement placed on it, not necessarily separated between five parcels. So I mean, you have the makings here of an open space development, but what you have right now is... Looks like just the standard subdivision. I mean, you're... Mr. Eaton should be able to help you walk through all of the elements of the open space development plan proposal, which, you know, and I would in particular point you to the 6.2.9, which gets into how you actually carve off that open space and then how it's treated after the project is approved with a conservation easement on it and held either, again, by a homeowners association, a land trust, or an individual, but there's a permanent conservation easement or deed restriction conveyed to the town.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the whole... That's the crux of this open space development plan. I mean, that's the reason why there are certain allowances for like only 80-foot road frontage and that kind of thing, because you are actually protecting, permanently protecting some open space as part of the project.
Okay. Well, I guess what I was here for anyways, long story short, I looked into Chapter 61, which is 4th Street. City has nothing to do with setting the rates. Rates are set by the state. It's two parcels land up the road. State got them valued at $77 an acre. The guy pays a dollar an acre for city taxes. So my question to you tonight was going to be is, I take off from my land and if you grant me another parcel, how much land do I set aside? And now it's getting involved again. I got to go back, this and that. There's a time limit for filing and dollars and cents wise, like I say, I'm paying $2,400 a year now. Under recreation, I can get down to six. Under 4th Street, I can get down to $38 a year. I'm going for the 4th Street. And I don't know, somewhere down the road, if you want it granted, granted, but other than that, I don't care. I just... I've been here... Every time I come here, it's one more hurdle, one more hurdle, one more hurdle.
Well, for me...
I'm getting tired.
For me personally, if your land is in 61 or 61A, that's a decision you want to make. I'm surprised you hadn't done it prior to this. I mean, you know...
Well, I haven't done it prior to it because I thought that I would be able to subdivide it reasonably. And now you're telling me that I've been paying all this extra money in taxes on land that is totally useless to me. I cannot use it.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, first of all, I would commend you to put it into 61. I mean, that's a... There's a lot of land out on... In West Hatfield that's in 61. The Morins have quite a bit.
61, they've got paid 25%. 61A is 4th Street.
No, 61A is the add. 61 is the 4th Street. And so that... I personally don't have a problem with that. It's a good, you know, if you want to do that and... But if you do want to pursue the common open space proposal, it's all here. It's just a matter of, these aren't hoops that you have to jump through. It's just, this is how it's laid out in the ordinance. And as you said, you did the calculations. The difference is, is that it's not actually showing up in your design, in your plan. You haven't... You're not showing where the common open space is going to be. And, you know, you're probably accurate that you would be setting aside almost 32 acres of land as permanent open space, which would be two and a half times I've...
Required.
That's then what's required, which is great, but it needs to... We need to see that. We need to see where it is. Right there, it's just... That's just a subdivision. Those are all divided up into lots. There's no common open space indicated on there.
Well, we've been going around for months on this and now I'm back here again and there is a time limit on taking that land out of 59 and putting it into 4th Street. I'm up against that. And as far as I'm concerned, the only one that ends up losing is the city because instead of $2,400 a year in taxes, they're going to be getting about $38 a year in taxes, which is fine with me. But I'm just sick of paying top dollar and then I got to come here and almost beg to have, get a piece of land that I bought and paid taxes on in good faith for years. I'm tired of jumping through hoops, so thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you. What do you want it? Does he want a five-lot subdivision?
Why did he want a subdivision? The lots are broken off on the road. No, that's...
That's his driveway.
That's his driveway. He would need to build that road.
That's not a road.
Oh, they never did accept that? Yeah. Out there to Helms's? It's Helms's driveway?
No, it's... I think at the last... Last one time he was here before, and he talked about the driveway. He wanted us to make it a road. And it's not...
Oh, 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 no.
It's not up to us. It's the...
I sold it... Now, how does this play out? I sold him that piece of property back years ago. Now, can I even vote on that or... I mean, how does that play out?
I would... Yeah. I mean, I think the statute of...
It was like 15 years ago or something.
The statute of limitations probably... I don't... I don't know if you think you have a vested...
Oh, okay.
Interest in that now.
I just didn't want to get myself in a mess before I started.
I would say, I don't think that's a problem.
But he got close. He just didn't complete the... Well, he's frustrated, you can see it.
He's got it, it's all one... Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 4, but there's no common area. He didn't carve out any common areas.
And that's all... I mean, that's all laid out here. I mean, he went through this.
He didn't want to build a cul-de-sac?
No, he didn't want to.
What's that? I mean, and he uses Old Stage Road as an example. It's...
Yeah.
It's an old county highway. It's been abandoned. It's not because of the lack of cul-de-sack, so it's not a good example of why you don't need a cul-de-sack.
He wanted to give his daughter... What started this is he wants to have his daughter build a house. And he wanted... He doesn't have enough... His property, the frontage is on Old Stage Road.
Very little, yeah.
Yeah, a very small thing. So he wanted to build another house for the daughter. And we told him that you don't have the 200... You got to have 200-foot frontage. And he said, "Well, why can't I use my driveway?" But that's a driveway. It's not... It's not town road. So that's where his frustration lies.
You could get a subdivision there without...
Well, we talked about doing a one... A one-lot subdivision before. And I thought that's what he was coming for.
Well, and the open space development plan would certainly work. I mean, he could do an open space development plan and there'd be a lot of protected open space up there, but the plan he brought us was not an open space development plan. It didn't show any of the common open space areas. No, it would just a subdivision. Yeah, yeah. So I think he... I think he can do what he wants to do, but he's going to have to do it in a different way. But he doesn't want to... He doesn't want to... Doesn't want to play that out. Yeah. Frustrated, you don't want to play it out.
All right, well, I guess we'll see what happens. Next up, Mr. Posh and Mr. Mendick, 28 Elm Street.
This is more of just a, I guess, more of a courtesy and a...
Informative.
To help, yeah, informative, just to put closure to it, so, you know, we're not waiting around for anything else. Decided to just scrap the whole subdivision idea and everything and just going to build a house in the middle and just going to get rid of that and simplify life. So we don't have to worry about changing rules, laws, or anything else. We'll just keep it as one non-conforming lot and not do any of that extra pavement stuff. Just going to go from the existing driveway that's there, keep the curb cuts and everything exactly the same, and then just extend the driveway back and put the house right there.
Where's the lot lines? The proposed lot lines?
Well, the lots...
Lots existing.
The lots existing, not changing. Not changing anything.
Yeah, so you're not going to have two lots?
No, 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 not two lots. No, no, just one lot, exactly the way she has it right now. Just one, seven, six, whatever, seven-acre parcel. Keep it as one lot, plain and simple.
You know the history, what was going...
And then just move the house.
The last meeting, he came and wanted to...
Of the new house, you mean?
Correct. Right. Just...
Make this a lot?
Yeah, not move the existing house, but just...
Take all these interior lines out and just... Is this then... Does he need the planning board?
No, he doesn't need it.
No, no, no. This wasn't a planning board issue or anything else. This was just... This was just a courtesy, you know, because he... You know, the last week closed it was, go back to the drawing board. I didn't want to leave you guys hanging, thinking, well, what's going on, you know? Where are we?
So you're going to keep the barn?
Yes, going to keep the barn.
Okay.
Correct. Yep. Keep that as it is and then just simplify matters and not worry about zoning.
Take the dust down?
Most likely. If I don't take it down, I'll gut it and use it as a second barn.
As an outbuilding, yeah.
As a second barn. So...
So it becomes a building permit issue then?
Correct. It's just with the building... Right. I just deal with the building inspector and he, you know, makes the rules and regulations, tell me what... Tells me what I have to do and I'll just comply with everything the building inspector says. And then we don't have to worry about zoning variances and all that other stuff.
Any concerns from the Historical Commission? Because is that part of historic...
I don't think that is, is it?
Is that part of Elm Street historical?
He said it wasn't.
I don't think Elm Street is, I don't know.
Not that one. The one over here.
The one down below? Yeah.
The one over here definitely is.
Probably the red one, yeah, probably.
That one, it's got a sign in front of it that flat out says Historical Society. I think that one would qualify. But this one, that's what I asked him the first time. And he said, "No, that doesn't... Doesn't apply." So I just wanted to say thank you and just put closure to it so nobody has to, you know, be concerned that we're going to do anything different. We'll stay with the rules.
So if you purchased the property and know stuff... So if you purchased the property and noticed the, the four sale sign is gone?
Yeah, I did. Yep.
Okay. All right, yeah, thanks for coming in.
And we're gonna need a 12-seat table for his wedding.
Thank you very much for all your help, and.
I think just the, the building inspector from, from now on, I think we're out of the picture.
Yeah, I thought I would just simplify matters and keep it easier for everybody, and just make it easier for everyone.
Okay, good deal. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, thanks for all your help.
Thanks for coming in, all right.
Have a good evening.
Okay.
Take care.
And I'm glad Mikey's still going along, good, keeping him good.
Thanks for everything.
Well, that's interesting.
Did you guys work together a lot?
Who, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, we did a lot, yeah. We did a lot together. And the one good thing about Mike Mendick, when the checks were cut, you never had to worry one bit about a, you know, a lot of these guys want to change the rules after the deal is done. Not with Mikey, what was done was done, always. Good guy in that regard.
Okay, well, that's interesting. I guess we know, we know the story now. You got down here zoned, a use of 5.26. I spoke to Bob about that, as a result of the, that, the land court regarding the solar project up on Chestnut Street, that, I don't think we have to change anything in, under that particular zoning, so.
Well, in fact, the, the decision confirms indeed the fact that we can.
Right.
Regulate zoning, or solar projects within certain zones, to the extent that they require a site plan approval or a site plan review, that that, the court determination was, is that that doesn't necessarily, in and of itself, represent an unreasonable restriction on solar in the bylaws. Because it, you maybe, you know, making a decision based on safety, general welfare, and, and health. So I, I don't think we have to change. If you, if you remember when, the last time Chris Smith was in to visit with us, he had brought along the material from, you know, the energy department. That seemed to suggest that the fact that we were looking for, you know, approvals, that that wasn't meeting the test of the state law. But the decision by the land court was that the state law does not, is not a, a, a blanket allowance or requirement that solar be in any and all districts, that there could be some review and regulation, it just can't be unreasonable regulation, so.
And then we had that other, I can't find it now, where solar would, that, the last section that we passed last year, the 2013 town meeting, which, where the heck is it? You know, where they talked about the different sizes of, of solar projects and co-ops, where there could be certain areas where it is allowed, where there's not, you know, I can't find it. I'll tell you what I'm talking about.
Is it, we'll know, is it section 5.26?
Yeah, 5.26.
What page is that?
That's under the table of use.
In the table of use?
Yeah, that's page 24. Then we had the, oh, right here, on page, on page 26. Where we were talking about the various.
Right.
Sizes of, you know, roof or ground-mounted energy systems, and the different sizes, which.
Well, and the fact that we, we do allow, they, they're not, there's a site plan and.
Site plan approval and site plan review.
Review, right. In each, in each of the other ones for the ground mount cooperative, and the medium ground mount solar generator, and the large ground mount. And again, my, my reading of that land court was that we're not, there's nothing here that, that runs counter to what they were saying in that decision.
Right.
So that decision worked in everybody's favor then, excepting for the people that wanted to put the.
Except for Citizens Energy and whoever the land, the land over.
Yeah, everybody else got kind of with.
Well, we, our, our ordinance or bylaw didn't exist at that point in time.
Right, you had nothing, right?
Right, at that point.
My thoughts is, it was, it was the way that they, you know, under the 5.26, the, they considered that a, including alternative energy manufacturing facilities for the manufacturer and/or assembly of, of equipment, and then, part of mine's cut off.
Yeah.
Talking about the solar, photovoltaic, hydroelectric, wind generation, so that, that was a matter of interpretation of 5.26, and the judge ruled in the favor. And in that, it's not allowed in rural residential, so. So we're not gonna make any changes then. We got, we got Briscoe's Form A, which we need to sign. Nothing from Mr. Losey, right?
Nothing.
I'll, I'll try to give him a call in the next few days, and see if I can get an update on what's going on with that.
That'd be good.
And then, I know that Bob had written a commercial parking bylaw, and a common driveway bylaw, and I think that was sent to the general counsel, our town attorney for their review, so I'm presuming that's where that's at now.
Yeah, and we haven't heard further from that. I will send Bob an email and see if he has. I'm sure he would have let us know.
And I'd like to have a little bit more time myself to look at the common driveway proposal that Bob had put together, I just didn't get a chance to get to it.
Okay.
I'd like to look at that in a little more depth. Oh, under the new business or posted business, do we need to do anything on the housing plan advisory committee? We had appointed Paul last time around, we need to.
Yeah, we just had different names for it, and she had sent over that to us the other.
Okay.
Now, they're gonna contact me, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second motion. Do you have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I had another question here. Oh, I saw Kyle Scott, and he said he was gonna write a letter regarding the Briscoe property.
Yep. He gave me that email, and he told me the same, that he was going to respond to.
Okay.
So that would get you filed.
So I guess the other thing, the only thing we need to do is to sign these. Any other business that, anybody, new business, old business?
Monkey business.
So the only, only business left is to.
Sign signatures.
Sign the Briscoe property and, and Mr. Aquadro's property.
Why did that here, is it easier in my office?
I guess we can do it here.
Do you have something finer than this?
No.
No?
They got a.
Do you have something better?
I've got a, I got a Sharpie. We use a Sharpie.
Like an ultra-fine point.
Yeah.
That's kind of thick too, isn't it?
Yeah, it's kind of thick, but.
Yeah, they gave this to me. You like that?
That's sweet.
Yeah, that's a nice one.
I usually use a finer.
It's almost as better, better than a D.
It's actually, it's actually just notes.
Is this a fine?
This is just regular. Yeah, see, the ultra, the ultra-fine point, it has a, like a fountain pen tip to it.
Yeah.
Want a black pen?
I don't know if that smudges.
Yeah, might be a little on the.
Or this, this says fine point, we can use that if we want.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, again, the ultra-fine point looks like a, a fountain pen, yeah.
I know what you're talking about.
I'll order us some when you're time around. Okay. I guess you need to put a date on there, and.
Today is, oh.
This is the 14th.
I'm excusing myself from this, from signing this.
That's all right, this is Briscoe, so you don't, all right, I'll go lining this one up then, and we can start with you then, if you will. So if you want to sign right there, I'll put the other two. Can I use this one?
We can't get up, right? Or can we get up?
It might work.
Well, you're not really a juror, Gil.
Okay, any other business? I make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion's made and seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.